I'd like to call the April 4, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at 6:30. Mr. Owen, do we have any need for non-public?
I have something under real estate, non-public.
And the board has something under personnel. All righty. The first thing, second thing on the agenda are minutes, and we'll start with the March 14. Does anybody have any corrections? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
Okay, the next set of minutes, March 16, 2018. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand.
Next one is the March 21, 2018 minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or changes? I do. On page 13, I'd like to, I'm looking at the last paragraph, and I'd like to remove the completion of a full background check and medical clearance will be completed. And instead, on the next page, starts as soon as the employment contract is signed, a full positive background check and medical clearance have been received. And then you scratch out, and all the conditions of employment are met, the Board of Selectmen will announce the candidate selected. It just seems like it was redundant if we left it on the other side. Anybody have any issue with that? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept as amended?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the March 23, 2018 set of minutes. Do I here have any corrections or changes? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And Dave Owen emailed to you the March 28 Public Board of Selectmen's minutes. Did everybody receive those? Does anybody have any corrections or changes? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're moving on to the reorganization, and the first one is the election of a chairman. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate you.
Okay. Do I have any? Any other ones? Are you making that as a motion?
Yes, I moved it. Linda, will I be chairman for the coming year?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next position is election of a vice chair. Do I have a nomination? I'll nominate Dave Senical.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Now, we were given a list of committees. And agricultural commission, Dave Senical, do you want to stay on that?
Yes.
Okay. Budget committee, Luke's out. Paul, will you take Luke's place on that?
Sure.
Okay. Carroll County Transportation, Dave Senical?
Yep.
Okay. Chamber of Commerce, I'll keep that. CIP Committee, I'll keep that.
Could I be your alternate on that, Linda?
Sure, you can.
Thank you.
Alternate, Paul. All righty. Conservation Commission Liaison, Dave Senical?
Yep.
EDC?
Yes.
Dave Bowers. And I'll stay on as an alternate. Emergency Response Committee, Dave Senical?
Yes.
Righty.
Could I join that as an alternate, please?
Sure. And that committee is different than the one that is going over the emergency management plan.
Mm-hmm.
Fisherville, I'm willing to stay on that. Brad, are you willing to stay with me?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Dave Senical, the Friends of Abenaki?
Yep.
Does anybody else want to be the alternate to that? Hearing none, I will stay on. Friends of the Libby Museum, Brad?
Sure, I'd like that one.
Okay. Friends of the Town Hall, I'd like to stay on that. Hazard mitigation, Brad?
Yep.
All members are trustees of the Libby Museum. The library, Dave Bowers?
Yes.
Milfoil Control Committee, I'm willing to stay on that. And I'm also willing to stay on the Joint Board. Negotiations, Dave Senical, will you head that?
Yeah.
Brad Herrmann, are you willing to stay on his planning?
Yes.
Planning Board alternate, Paul, do you want to?
I would.
Okay. I'll put you in there. Police Commission Liaison, Paul?
Sure.
Okay. Put Paul there. Community TV, Brad?
Yes.
Wolfboro Historical Society, Dave Senical?
Yep.
And alternate, Dave Bowers?
Yep.
Okay.
Is the Heritage Commission on a list of this, or is it?
No.
It's off the map?
Would you like to do that?
No, I don't know. No, I'm happy to be, I'm a member, but to put that on the list makes the list look longer.
Yes, we will, and we'll put your name next to it, okay?
Okay, I'm a member and an alternate, which we are with EDC also.
Next thing we have is the Board of Selectmen's Rules of Procedure. And does anybody have any changes to those procedures, or would like to change anything?
I'll move, we adopt the present procedures.
Second?
Rule of procedure.
Okay. I have a fir-
[inaudible]
This is the Board of Selectmen's Rules of Procedure, Mr. Owen?
You can have my copy.
There you go.
Are you within this paper?
What's that?
What are you going to use it for?
I just wanted to know what it was.
Oh, that's fine, no, it's good. It's well thought out.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty. Get through that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the bulk vote. We have a number of abatements and refunds. Does anybody have anything they want to address in the bulk vote? We do the weekly manifest, property tax abatement and refunds, property tax credits and exemptions, notice of attempt to cut wood or timber, and a current use application.
I have a question.
Yep.
Can you explain, apparently these lots became unbuildable. Why were they, did they become that?
My understanding, maybe Mr. Owen can do it, is that the zoning changed.
Zoning changed over the years. Some of these lots are partially in Alton, and it's my understanding that it's an unbuildable subdivision, and-
Because of the Alton boundary?
Because of the changes in zoning.
Is it?
Over the years.
Do I have any other questions or comments? Can I have a motion to accept the bulk vote?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're going ahead to new business, Arbor Day proclamation, 2018. Would the board like me to read this? Whereas in 1872, Julius Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first celebrated in the state of Nebraska on April 10, 1872, more than a million trees were planted throughout the state. Arbor Day is now celebrated throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs when planted correctly around our houses, moderate the outdoor temperature, clean the air, consume carbon dioxide, and produce oxygen, provide habitats, wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beauty, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Wolfboro has been re-recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 36 consecutive years, and desires to continue its tree planting practice. And whereas Wolfboro Park and Recreation Department, tree warden Kirk Titus, and the Crescent Lake School 5th grade class are hosting an Arbor Day tree planting event at Foss Field at 10:00 a.m. on May 4. Whereas the trees for planting have been donated by Bartlett Trees and the Wolfboro Park and Recreation. Therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of Wolfboro, New Hampshire, do hereby proclaim May 4, 2018, is Arbor Day in the town of Wolfboro, New Hampshire, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodland. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to glade the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generation. Dated this April 4, 2018. Can I have a motion to proclaim Arbor Day?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Rural and Scenic Road Committee report to the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen.
Pass that out.
Mr. Herrmann, are you going to do that for us?
Sure, I'd be happy to. If you'd like, what I'll do is I'll kind of read these reports so the audience and the people at home can kind of hear what it is. It's only one page here. The Ad Hoc Rural and Scenic Roads Committee, over a series of meetings, has developed a policy for achieving a high standard of maintenance for the rural and scenic roads in Wolfboro. Outline below our suggestions for your consideration. Mission statement: Develop a vision, protocol, and schedule for the maintenance and improvement of Wolfboro's rural roads with consideration for and attention to their traditional character and appearance with respect to budget and constraints or recommendations for investments. Procedure we're recommending is assess the condition of travelway, ditch lines, banks, and drainage structures, identify the maintenance needs of the individual roads, and develop a plan. And we came up with five maintenance policies. First one, grading. Grade annually or more often is needed in certain areas, maintaining the existing travel width, creating a crown in the road, and then rolling it with a vibratory roller. Ditches, annually clean the ditch lines of debris, leaves, winter sand, et cetera, to maintain proper drainage, keeping in mind the roadside and neighborhood appearances. Third one, culverts and structures. As an ongoing task, inspect culvert inlets and outfalls, catch basins and drain out, drain turnouts. Clean out debris as needed to maintain open flow of water. Fourth one, dust control. Continually monitor and apply dust control material to minimize dust from the traffic on the gravel roads. And five, BMPs, to utilize best management practices in all aspects of maintaining the road system. And employee training, we're recommending continue to support the training of the employees through the T-Squared program. And funding, to evaluate on an annual basis, future funding needs for maintaining the rural and scenic roads. And then stakeholder involvement, for the smaller maintenance repairs, to notify the neighborhood with door knockers, signage, or by voice of when and what type of work will be performed in their neighborhood. And for larger projects, to schedule a stakeholder meeting where the residents of the neighborhood can be informed of the work to be done and have an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. This committee, we've met probably half a dozen times at St. Paul, through the fall and early winter. Coming up, had a lot of discussions about, you know, maintenance procedures and things like that. And we really wanted to develop a, like a policy-type thing here, do not micromanage the department either. We just give them some guidelines to work within, and we feel as though we've done that. So we're presenting that to this board for consideration, for to develop or to place into a policy, which could be used as a guideline for the Highway Department. And I'd also like to take a minute here to thank the committee that worked on this. We had Ben Lad, Roger Murray, Claude Rossiger, Blair Moody, Paul O'Brien, myself. And town staff was very helpful in this with Dave Owen participating. Scott Pike was there for all but one meeting, he was out plowing at the last one we had. And Terry Tavoris helped out with taking minutes and things like that. So I'd like to thank all their input that they had and the work that was put into it. And that's pretty much it.
Does any board members have any comment? I think it's very well done. Mr. Owen, shall we make a motion to accept it? Is that what?
Yes, I think that's what a committee would like, is to bring this study to a conclusion.
Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the Rural and Scenic Roads Committee report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Paul?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda are the town boards and committees, and we have some vacancies. Mr. Owen, do you want to go through this?
Yeah, I provided the board a list of the different vacancies that we have on the town boards and committees for this coming year, and also the list of who has applied to date for appointment or reappointment. And as you'll see, we have a number of boards where we have enough or more than enough applicants. And then we have some boards for which we need applicants yet. Sure. The Milfoil Committee is, needs members. We did get one application in since you saw this, since you got this, so you have one applicant there. The Wolfboro Energy Committees needs some applicants. The Pathways Committee, I think, is a dead committee. They didn't get organized this last year, to my knowledge. They don't have a chairman, haven't met. I haven't seen any minutes, so I'm not certain there's a need to continue that committee or make new appointments or not. Information Systems Advisory Committee, the, I know Peter's, Pete Chamberlain's going to work on recruiting somebody for that. The Fisherville Committee is chronically in need of more participants.
Great fans.
And I think that pretty well covers the committees that we need more applicants for. Yes, sir.
Owen?
I volunteer for committee.
Um, EDC, do I read this correctly? EDC has four applicants for five positions, is that? That's how I read it, too. Where I think that we have either, yeah, we need one more, because we'd have three who would be full members, and we're missing one as if, we didn't appoint those or whatever. We need one more so we could fill the alter-
I just wanted to make sure I read it correctly.
Yes, no, you read it very correctly. And I think when we look at the ZBA, we have two alternates now who wish to be full-time members, so we may have to flip, look at alternates and full-time members.
In addition, on the EDC, Reverend Bill Peterson has applied to become a full member. He's currently an alternate member. He would like to be upgraded. We just received that communication within the last day.
Okay, so that'll be on our next.
It will be.
And then the Heritage Commission, seems like we need a bunch in that committee.
We have one opening that I'm aware of.
Well, you got ag commissions short too.
Well, I have here.
Well, there were two for three years. I believe one of them's reapplying.
And then we need one member for one year and one alternate for three years.
Mm-hmm.
So we only have one here. We need somebody else in there. It would be helpful to the town to have these committees filled. It's a way for people to be involved in the community and give back to it. So we're hoping that some other people will sign up. And members, if you can think of anybody who you might like to personally invite to come on one of those committees, sometimes that's the best way to get people on the committee. Any other comments on the vacancies on the boards?
Yeah, the only one I have, would like some explanation, the zoning board of adjustment?
Yep.
Two members for one year?
Yes.
We have four members applying?
Yes.
Now, I'm assuming that members that are already on there right now, until there's an election next year, stay on?
Yes, well, that's right. And somewhere, I don't think you have it in your packet yet, but it'll be in your next packet, is an explanation that Mark Puffer has provided, explaining to all of us that even though the town adopted the Warren article for an elected ZBA, that you will still need to make appointments to the ZBA for this coming year, and actually the year after that. You won't have a fully elected ZBA until, I think it's 2022.
They all rotate off, right?
Right.
Yeah.
They'll rotate off, and then each year there'll be new members elected. But right now, there won't be another town election until next March, so you've got vacancies that you need to fill.
Okay. It says here, we need two members for one year, and we have four applicants. How's that going to work?
We get to choose.
Tonight?
No.
No. The appointments will be at next week's, next, the next regular meeting on April 18. This is just to make the board aware of what we're looking at in terms of vacancies. And hopefully, if you know any people that might be interested in any of these vacant positions, any help in recruiting would be helpful.
And what I was saying about the ZBA, Dave, was two of the people who are planning would like to be a full-time. If we do that, then we'll open up an alternate position. Right? Okay. That takes here. Any old business? Okay, any other business? I have some other business.
I do as well.
You want to do yours first?
Go ahead.
Mine's going to take me a while, so you can do yours first.
In your packets tonight, you also had a letter from Todd Haywood?
Yes.
Next to last paragraph?
Yes.
In reference to the piece of property at Russ Pond, right beside Route 28.
Mm-hmm.
And I've read all the stuff in here, and another letter that I got from the state in reference to that piece. And the person that has a dock there does not own that property. And I think we need to, as Todd has said in this letter, that you may want to consult with town council as far as a title search on that property. Even though the state has done some, I think we need to take a stand on that particular piece of property and make the person aware that owns the dock, that it must be removed. I just want some backup from you people on that.
Yeah.
It's been a pet peeve of mine for many years, and Todd did research a little bit, and we got some information from the state.
Yep.
And Route 28 Committee started up, and the state says that we own it, they don't. They own the piece where the launch is, that we own the other piece up to the next property. So I would like to see some more information come available very quickly so that that dock can be removed.
Makes sense.
Yeah. In this letter also, it's the next paragraph up, and I agree with you on that on Dave. I had underlined the same thing and felt that we needed to follow through on that. But the paragraph above is talking about tax-exempt properties and charitable purposes, and he's going to take a closer look. And the mere fact that an organization has obtained a tax-exempt statute of 501(c)(3) does not alone qualify for property tax exemption. And I would like to get some more clarity on what he means by this, because we have huge number of nonprofit organizations that-
Probably four.
Yeah. So I think we need some clarity on where he's going to go with this and-
I think he'll-
I think that's that issue that has cropped up numerous times, where just because the property's owned by a not-for-profit, if it's not being used for the not-for-profit purpose of the organization, then it's not tax-exempt. And we've run into that in various locations in town.
Well, I'm fully aware of that, and Brewster McAdam is one, like his dorms are not taxed.
Right.
But this is something he, it seems like he is heading in a direction, and I just think I would like clarity. How about other members of the board?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we just want to have more clarity on what he's talking about here, because that-
I think both of those issues should be, Mark Puffer should be aware of them and research them, and tell us what we should do about them.
Okay?
Yes.
All righty.
Thank you.
I, after learning that Dave Ford was going to the Tufton Borough Selectmen's meeting, I called, I emailed Dave Owen and asked if I could go along, and Dave Ford and Dave Owen said that I could. So on April 2, I attended with Dave Ford a meeting of the Tufton Borough Selectmen. Mr. Ford provided to the Tufton Borough Selectmen a memo dated 4/2/2008, labeled Wolfboro Rapid Infiltration Beds, RIB Project Status Report, and spoke to the timeline of steps the town of Wolfboro took to address the unexpected issues at the RIB site in order to answer the many questions asked by Tufton Borough Selectman Chip Albee at the Wolfboro's Board of Selectmen's meeting on March 21. And I emailed that memo to Dave Owen, and I think he has emailed it out to the board. I would characterize our meeting as an exchange of information, with an underlying tone accusing Wolfboro of not providing Tufton Borough with all the information regarding the RIB site and excluding Tufton Borough from being involved in the process. The majority of the selectmen were pleasant and valued the positive relationship between the two towns, but said very little. In my opinion, one selectman had formed his ideas about what happened at the RIB site and his opinion on the lack of communication between Wolfboro and Tufton Borough without a good understanding of the process or the history. It seemed to me one selectman could not understand Wolfboro's need to fix the unexpected issues that occurred on the land in Tufton Borough and to maintain the area in the future. To him, Wolfboro was taking Tufton Borough land to expand Wolfboro's affluent disposal site, and even suggested again that Wolfboro was challenging, changing the town line, but backed away from that statement when challenged. So I'm going to, just so everybody can see, and the camera can see, this is the map, and there's one on the table, of the rapid infiltration site, and it's dated January 2017. This is the western discharge area. This is the discharge area, and this is the piece of property that we are trying to purchase. This is the town line. So this area was always expected to have affluent be discharged underground and come up into that wetlands. The Witten Trust sold us this piece of prop, this piece of property here for over a million dollars, and they were well informed that the discharge was going to come into that wetlands. Is this small? [inaudible] Who wants that?
Can I use this?
Yep. Can I use this? Yep. So the water was to go into the rapid infiltration basins, come down, go underground into the wetlands. What happened was it came down and hit areas where it would not go in. So I'll finish reading what I have. "The western groundwater discharge area was to be under the Tufton Borough land owned by the Witten Trust and the Witten Trust knew the affluent was going to be discharged in that area." I am quoting from Dave Ford's memo to the Tufton Borough Selectmen. Quote, "In April and June of 2009, the RIB site experienced unexpected issues in the form of groundwater breakout, sinkholes, and erosion. The town took proactive measures, performed detailed steps to mitigate the impact," unquote. "The town of Wolfboro believes that it is its responsibility to repair the six acres in Tufton Borough and to maintain the area going forward. The town first wanted to lease the six acres, but the Witten Trust wanted a purchase and that's what we're working on right now. The Tufton Borough Conservation Commission seemed to be satisfied with the information and communication from Dave Ford. Larry Gill and Steve Wingate from the Tufton Borough Conservation Commission spoke favorably about Dave Ford's communication with the Conservation Commission and the steps the town has taken. Mr. Gill spoke about the importance of the town of Wolfboro doing a study regarding pharmaceutical and personal care products in the aquatic environment to provide a background measure for these agents. Mr. Gill explained the importance of the study and I am in support of the town performing a pharmaceutical and personal care products study. I had Dave Owen send to the board a sheet with talking points regarding the study and a draft of a Wolfboro proposal to do the pharmaceutical and personal care products study. I believe the board should, in the near future, have Dave Ford present to the Board of Selectmen the merits of the pharmaceutical and personal care products to this board. And I wanted to get that information out to you all. So when I started thinking about it, I went back to the 2007 master plan and I was hoping I could find the 2018 mission of the master plan. And I just wanna read one sentence in the master plan vision statement. It's the second line. "It is a community," and it's referring to Wolfboro, "that is sensitive to and protective of the environment, particularly its abundant water resources." And then, "Our goal tool is to accurately identify the environmental characteristics of both our land and water resources and then implement best management practice that will produce future residents, a continuation of our current natural environment." And I started to think, well, what are those best management practices that we have been doing? And we have been putting together watershed plans. We've installed catch basins to collect sand so no, to cut down the amount of phosphorus that get into our streams and lakes. And we've been working on milfoil. And so it seems to me to be a natural step for us to take a look at the pharmaceutical and personal care products in our water. Dave?
I had a comment from two Tufton Borough people who watched the proceedings on television. And they said they thought that Chairman, Mr. Alby, bless his heart, had not read, was completely unfamiliar with what was going on. So I think that, I shouldn't say completely, but I think maybe if someone would write up something in simple English and pass it around to anybody who wants it, it would explain it. Because we, you know, we're reinventing the wheel 27 times here. We've done this so many times. And if the people, if the selectmen in Tufton Borough don't understand it, we should say, well, what is it about this you don't understand? It was very obvious that we were starting from zero at last meeting.
Anybody else have any comments on this? All right, we'll move on. Town managers' report.
Yes, I have a number of things I wanted to report out this evening. First, just for your information, the police chief and I this morning went down to the State House and testified on Senate Bill 569. That's the one Senator Bradley is sponsoring relative to animal cruelty. And, you know, this all stems from the event that we had here with the 84 Great Danes. So we got to testify before the Agriculture and Environment Committee of the House. And it was an interesting experience. And hopefully, the House will be as supportive of the proposed legislation as the Senate was. The Senate already voted it and sent it over to the House for their consideration. The town auditors completed their fieldwork here in town last week. So that's all done. And I believe the goal is to try to get the audit report presented at a board meeting before the end of June so that it can be done while Peter's still here and answer any questions about it. I think I mentioned to you that the two full-time administrative assistants positions that were in the, that were created in the 2018 budget, that being the Parks and Rec Department Administrative Assistant and the Police Department's Administrative Assistant, those have both been filled now. And so that's moving forward. Something I received in the mail yesterday, I think it was, that I thought I would report out is on the Josiah Brown Trust. As you may know, the Josiah Brown Trust dates back to the 1890s and it's always been administered out of the Suffolk County, Massachusetts court because that's where Mr. Brown died, was in Boston. So whenever we have wanted to effect some change or, you know, do something legally with the Josiah Brown Trust, we would have to find an attorney that was licensed to practice and, at the probate court in Massachusetts and go through a lot of expense and effort to get things done down there. It is in the process of being transferred up to the Carroll County Probate Court. It's been filed in the court. And I would expect that will be an approval letter coming shortly. So in the future, it will be a New Hampshire trust based in Carroll County.
Thank you for doing that.
Well, I didn't do that. The town council was mostly involved in that, but I'm just, I'm just reporting it out to you. Also, the town of Molton Borough is gonna have the next one of their regional meetings for select board members next Tuesday on April 6th. And I wanted to see if any members are available to attend that.
What time?
It's 6:30 PM at the Molton Borough Town Hall.
Mr. Owen, what generally is covered on the agenda?
I haven't attended these meetings, so I'm not really certain.
It's really kind of a regional group. And the one that I attended, they were at that time looking at purchasing electricity together. And I don't know if they've worked that out and they're onto something else.
It didn't really affect us very much.
No, it didn't.
We already purchased electricity for the whole town.
Would you like, maybe we need more information on what they're going to...
When is it again?
It's the 6th.
Next Tuesday, the 10th.
Oh, the 10th?
At what time?
6:30.
Huh?
Should I put you down, Dave?
I have the ability to go. I'd just like to know what the agenda is before I decide whether I should go or not.
Yeah, that's kinda where I am. I've been to one of them and it didn't relate to us, so it was a...
You want more information?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll see what I can get and I'll send it out email-wise.
Thank you.
To you. Also, the Wolfboro branch of the Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter Day Saints has sent us correspondence saying that they're now saying that their church building project has been completed and they're excited to show it to the community. So they are inviting all of you to attend a public open house to see their new building. It's gonna be on Saturday, April 7th, that's this Saturday, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
I'll go to that.
Okay, any others or...
We'll miss it.
Okay. And on the assessing department report, Dave Senical sort of stole my thunder there and he beat me to the point there about needing to do something about that boat ramp parcel on Russ Pond. And that's all I have.
Okay, committee reports. I'll start down with Paul. Did you have any committee reports?
I have no committee reports. I did attend the library energy team meeting last week. It was actually quite well-done by both the energy consultant as well as the library. But that's about as far as I can go because I haven't been on the selectmen's committee yet.
Dave Senical?
I had a ZBA meeting Monday night. That's all I've had.
Greg?
Let's see, last Tuesday, we had a Wolfboro Community TV meeting. Last night, planning board meeting. We had three fairly small public hearings and we had got into a discussion about our master plan moving forward. A lot of the subcommittees are running and meeting now. And we also had a Friends and Living Museum meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, I just did the Tufton Borough Selectmen. Dave?
On my committee reports, I've been interfacing with the library. It's doing more research and getting more research inquiries. So I'm helping that, helping them out when they get them.
Okay, do I have any questions from the press?
Press?
Nope.
They can't hear you on the, at home.
It's not turned on.
The microphone on, please?
Turn it on. There should be a little switch somewheres.
You had a list of vacancies and on the form that I received in the packet, it said the deadline was March 23rd. But I assume I can put that in the paper and encourage people to sign up on those, for those empty spots.
Absolutely, we'll take them.
That would be great.
If we'd like to fill these positions and even if the day that we are appointing, if somebody comes up and wants to be considered, I think the board would be more than glad to consider them.
If they come to that meeting?
They should try to get an email in first.
Okay.
But if somebody came to the meeting, I am sure we would. And we had a vacancy, we would.
Okay, I also had a question. It says there's a spot for trustee of the trust funds and I always thought those were elected.
They are, but the alternates are appointed.
Oh, okay.
By the selectmen.
Okay. Right, I think, I think that's it. I too was at the Tufton Borough meeting. And I have an article coming out on that that basically reiterates what Linda has said and deals with that issue. So that whole meeting was three hours. That discussion was at least an hour, so that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public input. It's limited to three minutes per person, not to exceed 15 minutes. Do I have anybody that'd like to speak? Yes, and will you just state your name for the record?
Hello? My name is Sarah Maraz. Sorry. Public speaking is not my strong point, so I'm sorry if I sound a little weird. First, I understand I only have three minutes, so I wanna make this hasty. I just wanna confirm that the next meeting is April 18th, 2018?
Yes, it's the 18th at 6:30.
Perfect, okay. Now, is there a way to get a meeting with the Board of Selectmen's that is a little bit longer than three minutes? Is there a way that I could, like, get a meeting together so that way I could present a case or something? Or something that might take more than three minutes to explain?
You get in touch with the town manager and put it on the agenda with the subject.
Oh, so it would be discussed at a town meeting?
You need to write a proposal so we know what you have, so we can look at it before you come. You ask for an appointment and there's no time limit on an appointment.
Okay, perfect. All right.
What is your subject if you want them to help you out?
It's kind of up in the air right now. It could be a lot of things, it could be just one thing, who knows?
We wanna help.
It involves the Coppell-Crown Village District that is in New Durham. I'm interested in trying to get them on the list of things that are included or the towns that are included in the resident situation when it comes to things like Parks and Rec Recreation and other programs similar to it. And I was wondering also, that was another one of my questions, what steps can I take to, because I understand I probably need to talk to the commissioners of the New Durham of Coppell-Crown and then I have to talk to the Town Hall of New Durham. Now, like, how should I present that to them and what should I be asking them? What steps do I need to take to get that happening?
Do you live in New Durham?
I live in Coppell-Crown Village District, which is...
We have a relationship with the Tufton Borough, with Parks and Rec, where they pay part of, like, Abenaki Ski.
Yes, and the other town too, right?
I would imagine, I'm not speaking to the chairman, I'm speaking as a select board member, that if you had, if you checked to see what we do with Tufton Borough and see what you might wanna do, you know, presented, it sounds like a good idea because I think any of our programs, like we did with Middleton School recently, and you're already a member of the school system. Adding on to the recreation would be a good idea. It'd probably cost you a few dollars, but it'd be good for your kids.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, right now, you're able to sign up for any of our recreation programs as a non-resident. And if I'm understanding you, you would like to do it as a resident. And the way the other towns got, were able to do that, that their town officials put in their budget, a set amount, to be paid to Wolfboro to help pay for our Park and Rec Department. So your first move probably should be to see if your select people are willing to do that.
Okay, now, is it possible to not barter, per se, but because we're a small village district and we're not in, we're not part of New Durham technically, but they are the town that's attached to our village district, is there a possible way to be able to, like, barter the price? Because if we're just a small little thing...
You are a New Durham resident, you pay New Durham taxes. And when they did this, they paid the town of Wolfboro a set amount. It wouldn't be just for your district. It would be for anybody in New Durham to take part in the, as a resident amount after the amount was paid. So they aren't, I would be surprised if they would do it just for your little district. They probably would do it for the town.
Okay.
People on a certain road and they'd pay a certain amount.
Okay, perfect. And I also had some unrelated questions, sort of. I had a hard time finding you guys' contact information, like emails or phone numbers. I had, like, I tried to contact Mr. Owen earlier to see if he could give me your phone numbers or your emails for contact and he refused me. And I was wondering if there's an easier way to get in contact with you guys for important questions or inquiries.
I think that's on the town website, how to contact selectmen.
It's not, actually, I looked.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll give you my email and you can contact me. I'll work with you.
Thank you.
By the way, we, Milton, which is on the other side of you, has come to us. I met with them about two or three years ago and they've been divorced from Farmington. The local paper won't even cover Milton news anymore. So we have a Middleton column and there's always a possibility that, because you're, you're sort of like northern Michigan, this is Detroit, that you could always contact the Grand Estate News and see if they want some news from, is your, is your district called Coppell-Crown?
Coppell-Crown Village District.
Yeah, you might see if, maybe once a month, you put in Coppell-Crown News. They like things like that.
Very neat, okay.
And what you, best way to get in contact with all of us is to send an email to Dave Owen, which is the town manager, an email and ask him to forward it to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Because that way it gets to us and it's in writing, so it's very clear for us. And then you get it to all of us. and then you get it to all of us. So we all have the same information, and that really is your best way to do that.
And is it unlawful for him to ignore that email, or is it like, he's set in stone that he must forward it to the rest of the board?
Dave Owen will email it, send it to us. I don't have any question that he will, if you ask that.
Excellent, very, all right. And I'm probably getting close to the end of my three minutes, so I'm trying to try and rush it along. I was wondering if the town budget is public record, and if it's possible to get a copy of that? And do I have to sit in an office with a big book and photocopy each page, or is there a way that I can just get the whole thing so I can look it over at my own house?
Yeah, no, there should be a copy of the budget.
I think it's very much on the town website.
It's probably, you're going on to our town website, and look under finances or budget, budget committee.
Spectacular, all right. And one last thing. Hypothetically, in the event of, like, suspected corruption within a town system, what is the protocol for that? Is that something that I would have to go to, like, the police station about, or is that something that I would...
Are you going to file a complaint about it?
Um, no, no, I mean, I'm not...
Because if you're going to file a complaint, you would go through the police department.
Okay.
If there is a question that you have for us, you can come to us, the Board of Selectmen, and address it. At any point, you are welcome to come to a public meeting and say whatever you please in that timeframe.
Okay.
Any town business, through the town manager. We're changing town managers in about a month and a half.
Really?
We've, a new lady is coming on board.
And what's her name, do you know?
We haven't announced that yet.
Oh, okay. All right, I think that's about it for now, and I'm probably going to show up at the next meeting, so...
That's great.
You're welcome to come to any public meeting.
When I mention contacting me, any, if you have a complaint about anything, contact the police department, but if you just want general information on how to find things, I'm at your service, okay?
Excellent, thank you so much.
And you really should send it through the town managers so we all get it, because one selectman really can't function on his own.
Yeah, well, I had asked him to see if I could get some contact information for you today, actually, and he refused and said that he thinks that my ideas are going to be a burden or something. He said some kind of crazy thing, that he would, he completely refused to let me contact you.
Well, you did the right thing. You came here and addressed us, and we've given you the means, and I am sure he will get a hold of it. But you need to deal with your own town and your own selectmen.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that that was the next step to take, and make sure that we can all collaborate together if I was to make the steps towards talking to them and all that.
Yep.
All right. Thank you guys so much for your time, much appreciated.
And you can have your Board of Selectmen contact me if they want to, okay?
Thank you.
Do I have anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak? Nope. Okay. I need a motion to go into non-public session.
So move.
Oh, I have a few announcements first. Wait, don't go yet. I have written down here, the Lake Wentworth Watershed Association Landscaping Watershed Session, two hours for contractors and the public, is tomorrow from 5 to 7 at the Town Hall Grade Hall. And I also want to say that the Park and Rec Spring and Summer Brochure is out. There's some at the Town Hall. I imagine there's some at the library, and anybody who would like to sign their children up for the summer and spring events should get that brochure. Now I need my motion.
So move.
Second.
Paul? Yes?
Yes, I said second. Yes, yes.
Dave?
I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, okay. Here we are.
I got to remember how to do this, I apologize.